Alright folks, let's call the meeting to order. This is a Greer City Council meeting called and convened this evening, September 12th, 2023. Having called the meeting to order, I'd like to ask Councilman Riley Bettis, if you would, please, to lead us in a pledge of allegiance and an invocation for council. If you'll stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Heavenly Father, please comfort and bless the families and friends of the many innocent victims of the 9/11 tragedies. May we never forget the presence of real evil in this world. We are truly blessed to be here in this special city with extraordinary people. It is an honor to serve in this capacity. Help us to remember that we have a duty to make measured decisions to benefit the quality of life for all of our citizens. Help us to honor our God-given rights and to be guided by the absolute unchanging and unchangeable truth of your word. Help us to reject greed, exploitation, and needless debt in our debates, and to have compassion in our judgments. Amen.
Well, we thank you for joining us this evening. We do set aside time at the beginning of every meeting for public forum. Ms. Duncan, do we have anybody to appear in public forum this evening? With that, then, let's move to the minutes of our council meeting held on August the 22nd, 2023. I'll entertain a motion that those minutes be received.
So moved.
Second. And a second. Any items of note for the clerk? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Let's move to the administrators' report. Mr. Merriman?
Mr. Mayor, council, thank you and good evening. Just a few reminders this evening, first of all, and very important, something that staff and council and some of our folks in our community have been working on for almost two years now, is the Unified Development Ordinance. Well, we are at the point where we are at the public meeting portion of that process, and this is just a reminder that we will hold five public meetings, which are drop-in style, scheduled over the next two days, to provide residents with more information about the public draft of the UDO. And those meetings will be here at City Hall tomorrow from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00, and then again at 4:30 to 7:30 p.m. And then Thursday, we have three sessions at the Cannon Center, from 7:30 a.m. to 9:00, then again at 11:00 till 1:00, and then again at 4:30 till 7:30. So for not only council but members of the public that are interested in the land development regulations and zoning changes that will become naturally with the UDO, that'll be the time to come in and drop in and learn a little bit more about that process. The Citizens Academies, we're at that time of year as well. Two of our most popular Citizens Academies are underway this week, as the Civics Academy holds its first session tomorrow evening. And the Development Academy for our professional development folks in the area will follow on Thursday. Fire Academy, the Citizens Fire Academy rolls out on the 21st. Our Police Department is partnering with Nuevo Comienzo Church to host the Forward Festival this Friday in recognition of Hispanic Heritage Month. This is a free event, which will run from 6:00 to 8:30 at the Cannon Center. So we look forward to partnering with that. And then finally, I do want to say and send a congratulations out to Chris Brantley, our fleet manager, and our folks in fleet, as well as Ms. Woodruff, our Assistant City Administrator. We were awarded today the Southeast Governmental Fleet Managers Association Award for Fleet Management Practices. We submitted a project that we had done, we being our staff out in fleet management, to reprioritize how we manage our fleet. And as you well know, our Fund 10, our lease purchase program, is a substantial investment that we make in our fleet and all the material that we use, our rolling stock. And our folks and the investment that y'all have made in our fleets is starting to show dividends in how we manage and care for that stuff and keep it on the road, running longer and more efficiently. And so Chris and his team submitted this to the Southeast Governmental Fleet Managers Association, this project, and won. So my hat's off to them and to Chris and his leadership for his work as our fleet manager. So just another kind of kudos to our team. Mr. Mayor, unless there's any questions, that concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Council, let's move to items of business. We only have one as old business this evening, and that is the second and final reading of ordinance number 20-2023, an ordinance to provide for the annexation of a certain property owned by Ilgen American Corporation located at 1705 Poplar Drive Extension by 100% petition. Any new or additional information in that regard?
Planning Commission held a public hearing on August 21st and recommended approval.
Comes with a recommendation from the Planning Commission with approval, I'll entertain a motion for the purpose of discussion.
So moved.
And a second.
Okay.
Have motion and a second. Floor is open for discussion. Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Let's move to items of new business, the first of which is the reading of ordinance number 15-2023. This is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of a certain property owned by Delta Express Incorporated, located on Freeman Farm Road by 100% petition, and to establish a zoning classification of R2 for said property. Ms. Byers?
Ordinance 15-2023 is an annexation request on Freeman Farm Road for RM2 multifamily residential zoning. This is also the first of two ordinances for the same project tonight. An aerial image of the subject parcel. RM2 multifamily residential is shown in the gold color, S1 services in the blue, and parcels without an overlay are unzoned Spartanburg County. Future land use map shows mixed employment in blue, a photo of the existing parcel as it today. And again, the request is to annex and zone to RM2 multifamily residential. Surrounding land uses are vacant, RM2 in Spartanburg County, and Planning Commission will hold a public hearing September 18th.
By show of, thank you. By show of hand, is the owner or representative of the owner of the property with us this evening? You available for questions if they arise? Thank you. For the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive first reading of ordinance number 15-2023.
So moved.
Have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Floor is open for discussion.
I wrote down there, and I didn't see, are there any signs posted yet? You know, like the special meeting and all that signs that are out on the road?
Yeah, so there were two signs posted, one on Freeman Farm, and then one to the road north of that as well, posted last week.
Okay, okay. Apparently, I just missed them, because I didn't see any. And I turned and went down Old Jones Road, and I didn't see any there either, but.
Okay, they were posted, and we have photos, but we can definitely go out and check again to make sure they're still up.
As a, as a housekeeping note on the map, you probably want to take that inset off.
Which map?
The map of the area, and then you've got the inset map that's supposed to show the actual map, not aerial.
Oh, okay.
I think it's Exhibit C.
Oh, okay.
It's, you've got, just check it, it becomes really clear.
You got an inset of Subaru and Wade Hampton. Questions? Comments?
This was for apartment complex, was that correct?
That's correct. And so the next ordinance after this is for another piece adjacent to this. Yes.
How large, do you have any idea how large the apartment complex is supposed to be?
So we don't have a site plan at this time, but they are combining it with additional parcels that are already in the city. You can see kind of north up there, and the max density is 287 units.
Either of you gentlemen wish to give some overview for the purpose of just general discussion, or not at this point? If you do want to make a comment, I would ask you to come to the podium, please, just as a matter of record. If you don't want to, that's fine as well, too.
Do you have any updated units? Otherwise, the 287 is kind of the max density.
Okay, alright, that's fine. Alright. Others?
And again, our process for apartment complexes, so we approve these readings, first and second, and then doesn't it, doesn't it go somewhere else beyond this for another discussion?
So under the current code, it does require a special exception. However, the proposed UDO would remove the need for a special exception. So after annexation, they would be eligible to move on to PAC and then Site Development Plan.
I know we've had a lot of discussions about multifamily use recently. I think appropriately so, just based on the requests that have come our way, you know, representing District 3 in this area, south of 85. And just seeing the location here, I know the residents that I talk to on a regular basis there, this is an appropriate place for that. So if we're going to have multifamily, I think this is a great, a great place, kind of one of those transitional areas there, so.
Yeah, under the UDO, there will be additional increased buffering requirements than what would have been required previously, so staff does agree that it is an appropriate use of multifamily.
As a matter of clarity, this is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of the property, so that's where we are at this point. Further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Second item before us this evening is the first reading of ordinance number 17-2023. This is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of a certain property owned by Zane Hannah, located on Old Jones Road by 100% petition, and to establish a zoning classification of RM2 for said property. Ms. Byers?
So again, this is the companion to the previously heard ordinance, requesting an annexation and zoning of RM2 multifamily. An aerial image of the subject parcel. RM2 multifamily shown in gold, S1 services in blue, and the remainder are Spartanburg County with those without an overlay. Future land use shows mixed employment in blue, a photo of the existing site. And again, request to annex, zone to RM2, surrounding land uses are vacant in Spartanburg County, and Planning Commission will hold a public hearing on September 18th.
By show of hand, is the owner of the property or representative of the owner of the property with us this evening? Are you available for questions if they arise? Thank you. With that, then, I'll open the floor for discussion. Oh, we'll need a motion to do that, won't we? I'll entertain a motion to receive for the purpose of discussion.
Second.
Now we can get for discussion. Floor is open for discussion.
Is the, I'm assuming the strip annexation is shown on the map, that's the way, the connectivity to the city?
That kind of bright green line there?
Okay.
Yes, that was a previous connectivity for the existing parcel in gold.
This is somewhat related, but does, another airport, but the BMW, if we are, if someone wants to annex property and they are contiguous with airport property, I know, but how about the BMW property? Does that make us, make it contiguous? Okay.
You're asking if there's a parcel that's adjacent to the BMW property that's not in Incorporated City of Greer?
Right.
Is it, is, no, that doesn't, it doesn't grant contiguity, because unless there's something out there that allows for that, that I'm unaware of.
Well, the airport does. I know.
But therefore?
But the airport, that is allowed, because.
The airport maybe, BMW, I don't think, though. But I can verify.
We probably need to verify that, because there was, that was one of the issues that was, I think, litigated.
That's a new one on me, but that's fine.
Yeah, no, I'm positive that the airport is, because it was special legislation at the airport, because they were, they were concerned that we would try to annex them.
So we'll take a look at it.
Yeah, and that's just.
It would involve the port, then, because the port is the.
The port's always been.
Not all of it, though, right? No, I think every bit of the port property proper is in the city.
The port has always been in the city for as long as I can remember. But, but with another airport, if someone wants to annex property and their property joins the airport property, then that provides contiguity, based on legislation that, and that's been some years back, but.
Okay, yeah, I'll take a look.
Yeah, we need, yeah.
Others?
Now, these two properties don't join, correct?
That's correct. However, they also own the parcel in the middle, that's, or about to own, and they will all be combined for that part of the use.
Okay, okay.
With the UDO coming online, is, what are the, are there any green space requirements or any kind of suggestions? I know you talked about buffering, but is any of that going to be incorporated into this?
Yeah, we can't remember specifically, but we can definitely have those ready for your review at second reading.
Will that be part of this project, or is that what would be next?
I believe the intention is to submit this as part of the UDO and those new standards. In that case, they would apply to this project.
Okay, good, thank you.
That, of course, predicated on successful passage of the UDO. Pictures, I don't know this out of that well. Others? Questions? Further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. First reading of ordinance number 18-2023, an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a development agreement by and between the City of Greer, South Carolina and Freeman Farm Apartments LLC, or its assigns with respect to capital improvements in the City of Greer and other matters related thereto. Comes to us at this point. Ms. Byers?
I don't have anything to add. This is our standard development agreement for residential annexations.
With that, then, I'll entertain a motion to receive. So moved.
Second.
And a second. Floor is open for discussion.
I just want to note, I appreciate the inclusion of the specificity of the funds being designated for capital improvements south of 85. I think that's meaningful, especially with everything that we do have going on down there, and very appropriate. So I appreciate that specificity and that foresight there, and I know my constituents do as well.
Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. First reading of ordinance number 24-2023. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of a certain property owned by Bloom Investments LLC, located at 310 Buncombe Street, from R12 to R7.5. Ms. Byers?
So again, ordinance 2020, or 24-2023 is for rezoning to R-7.5, R7.5, single-family residential. An aerial image of the subject parcel, and for context, this piece is directly across from the Greer Recycling Center off Buncombe Street. Current zoning map shows R12, single-family residential in the light yellow, RM2 multifamily in gold, C2 commercial in red, and S1 services in blue. Future land use map shows traditional neighborhood. This is a survey of the parcel with the proposed subdivision shown with that pink line. Staff has conducted a preliminary review to verify that this proposal meets our current and potentially future standards. Here's a photo of the site. The existing home will remain in its current configuration. And again, this request is to rezone to R7.5, single-family residential. Surrounding land uses are both single and multifamily residential, as well as the recycling center. Planning Commission held a public hearing on August 21st and recommended approval.
For the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive. So moved. And a second?
Second.
By show of hand, is the owner of the property or representative of the owner of the property with us this evening? Thank you, sir. Are you available for questions? Thank you. Floor is open for discussion.
Essentially, what they're trying to do is to add a, create a flag lot here?
That's correct. And it might be a little confusing, but that piece shown overlapping is actually an existing concrete pad that will either be removed and replaced with the driveway. I know it kind of might, might look like it's crossing over the building, but it is not.
So it'd be a front lot and a back lot, isn't that what it is?
Yes, our minimum standard for a flag lot is 20 feet, and so they're showing that, and there'll be a house in the back.
Access to the back, I guess.
I think they're going to run a driveway up that strip, but if there's any additional.
That's correct.
I know there's a creek on the back left corner of this lot, too. Do we have any type of requirements as far as distance from creeks and things like that? When, or any, I don't know.
Yeah, stormwater will conduct a review, and depending on the distance, it might require an additional setback. I would defer to engineering.
I believe there's a power, like a pretty large utility line that goes through there, too.
To the left.
Oh, it doesn't, doesn't cross this lot?
Mm-mm.
Okay. Because this is next door to that multifamily, you remember the one that was on the corner that used to be the hot dog stand that we had? A lot of discussion, but this is right next door to that.
It, to the developer, is there, is this going to be held for rental, or will it be sold?
This will be a rental property.
And?
Single family.
By your company, or who?
Yes, yes, sir.
And so you own the house in front as well?
Correct.
You guys have already started on that, right?
Yeah, we're driving along right now until we have an extension.
So what's the setback for a driveway, particularly in regards to the flag lot there?
There isn't one.
There's not one?
No.
I think driveways can go right up to the.
The house in front will have its driveway separate from the one going to the back house?
Correct.
So it won't be landlocked?
Outline and show the driveway of the existing house.
Okay, okay.
For flag lots, is that minimum with changing into new UDO? 20 to?
I do not think so.
Same. You know, okay. I've seen 25, but 20 is kind of tight. I do that, to the developer, what size home do you intend?
Do you mind coming to the podium, please, sir? Now, if you don't mind, it helps with the matter of the record.
My name's Kyle Sikla, 18 Beach Creek Court, Greer. So your question was the existing or the new?
No, the, the new home that you're.
So it'd be about 1,200 square feet.
Three bedrooms or two?
Three bedroom, two bath.
And the current house is what size? I know much smaller, or?
It's, it's a two-bedroom, one-bath, it's about 700 square feet.
24 by 25.
Yeah, it's a small, original mill house.
And where is the parking going to be now for the front house? Are you just going to put a little pad in front of it, or?
Yeah, the driveway that I kind of shown there, it's going to be right in the front of the house for the existing.
Gotcha.
And we're planning to do like a fence line down the pink highlighter, and then the driveway to the back would go, be basically a 12-foot wide driveway, so there'd still be some room within that 20 feet for landscaping or grass on either side. So I think it looks funnier on a flat than it does in real life with flag lots always.
Yeah, but the existing home looks like it lapses over into where the other driveway will be, is that right?
It's 10 feet off the property line, so what lapses over is, it was a patio, it's kind of buried with overgrowth now, so that will come out, that small pad.
And you're going to have them digged in as two lots?
Correct.
Comments? Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Last item before us in new business this evening is the first reading of ordinance number 25-2023. This is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of a certain property owned by APIC14 LLC, located on Wade Hampton Boulevard by 100% petition, and to establish a zoning classification of C2 for said property. Ms. Byers?
Again, this is an annexation request for C2 commercial zoning. Aerial image of the subject parcel. Surrounding zoning is C3 highway commercial in pink, and the parcels without an overlay are in Greenville County. Future land use map shows suburban commercial in pink, a photo of the existing parcel. And again, request to annex and zone to C2 commercial. Surrounding land uses are commercial, and Planning Commission will hold a public hearing on the recommended zoning September 18th.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to receive.
Motion.
Second.
And a second. By show of hand, is the owner of the property or representative of the owner of the property with us this evening? Thank you. Are you available for questions? Thank you. Floor is open for discussion. Questions? Comments?
What type, do we know what type of retail is going to go there at this point?
A mattress store. They are currently working through the STP process and have already gone to PAC, and everything's on hold to pursue the annexation.
That's, that's for one of the retail spots. What's, what's the other one? Do you know?
I'm looking for.
I don't know that we all heard that, so if you can.
Okay, he said they're, they're still looking for the second tenant, and that'll be something similar within the C2 zoning. They're not. They're not quite sure, but they've already started advertising.
Thank you. Questions? Further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Counsel, we do not have any items for executive session. Stand adjourned.